I would like to call this special meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. If you would all, please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens.
Amen.
Amen. Uh, thank you, Ms. Riska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Rosky.
Here.
Mrs. Kasky.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Present.
Present.
Mr. Yanis.
Here.
Present.
Council, we need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Meir.
Mrs. Konski.
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Uh, tonight is a great night. This is, uh, an annual event we've had. I can't remember if we were able to do this, uh, the past couple of years in the, in the way we like to do it. Um, so it's great to see all of the students here. Um, and I congratulate all of you for everything that you've done during your high school careers. And some of you I know are in college already. So, uh, we're, we're really excited to be back and be able to present these scholarship awards and give you the recognition that you deserve. So we'll get right into it. So, uh, we do have a presentation tonight, a number of presentations. And this is to recognize and congratulate the recipients of scholarship awards, scholarships awarded through the 2022 Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation Scholarship Program. Uh, so it's my honor to welcome up to the podium the present, president of the Sterling Heights Community Foundation, Dr. Martin Brown. Dr. Brown.
Thank you very much, Mayor Taylor and council members, city manager, uh, Mr. Vanderpoel. Thank you again for the opportunity to share the annual Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation Scholarship Award Program with our community. Uh, the foundation was established in 1991 to strengthen the quality of life in Sterling Heights for the residents by improving cultural, educational, and recreational opportunities. The foundation's annual scholarship program is one of the most important and popular programs of our mission. And each year, the foundation receives hundreds of scholarship applications and scholarships are awarded based upon our sponsors' unique requirements. Uh, they include academic performance, leadership, community service, career plans, and need. The foundation looks forward to this program every year, and we're very proud to support our community's finest students as they continue their academic growth. The Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation is thankful to our sponsoring partners who continue to demonstrate their passion for education and community outreach each year through their support of this exceptional scholarship program. And now it's my pleasure to introduce you to our foundation executive director and the president emeritus, Carl Asgoyan. And he'll tell you more about the scholarship program and preside tonight over our award ceremony. Thank you. Carl?
Thank you, Martin. Good evening, Mayor Taylor, council members, and city manager Vanderpoel. Thank you again for the opportunity to share the annual Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation Scholarship Award Program with our community. And on behalf of the foundation, welcome to our 24th Annual Scholarship Award Ceremony to area students pursuing degrees in higher education or vocational training. The foundation strives to achieve its mission by continually initiating and implementing projects that reach a wide segment of the community and by helping to foster a community-wide philanthropic environment through partnership and collaboration with area businesses, companies, organizations, and other nonprofit organizations. Our partnership effort is clearly evident here this evening as our 11 sponsorship partners are awarding a total of 23 scholarships worth $26,000. The organizations awarding scholarships in 2022 are BAE Systems, General Dynamics Land Systems, the Macomb County Chiropractic Association, the former mayor Richard J. Noddy Endowment for Government Public Service, new this year, the Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. Endowment, the Ronald Himmler Science Scholarship, the Rotary Club of Sterling Heights, the Selfridge Air National Guard Base Community Council, the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation, the Sterling Heights City Manager Public Managed Men's Scholarship, Vibe Credit Union, and new this year, Wu-Jack Calcaterra and Sons. Community leaders like our 11 scholarship partners make a difference in the lives of not only the students but our community at large. We're fortunate to have individuals and companies like our scholarship partners come forward annually and make a difference in the lives of so many outstanding students by helping them prepare for their professional careers. The foundation began awarding scholarships in 1999, and with this evening's awards has presented scholarships totaling $458,000 to 505 area students pursuing degrees in general studies, technical training programs, science, technology, engineering, mathematics, healthcare, and public service fields. Each year, the foundation receives hundreds of applications, and based upon our sponsors' unique requirements, they select some tremendously outstanding students, which you're going to see this evening. So we look forward to this program every year. And with that, I also look forward to now introducing to you our foundation scholarship chair, Naok Do. Naok?
Thank you. Thank you so much for, um, being with us this evening. Proud parents, awardees, families, and friends. On behalf of our foundation scholarship selection committee, I congratulate each of the 23 students we are honoring this evening. The scholarship selection committee members have read your applications, evaluated your transcripts, and selected you from a very large number of excellent applicants as the winners of our 2022 College Scholarship Awards. Our scholarship program sponsors are local companies, businesses, and individuals who provided the funding for your award. They also set the demanding requirements you had to meet to win the award. Each of you have outstanding credentials, amazing credentials. You've achieved a very high scholastic GPA, many of which were over 4.0. I think that's the new standard. You've participated in many school and community activities and very often took a leadership role. You expressed a strong desire to continue in your education and set very high expectations for yourselves. You have made your parents proud, grandparents, brothers and sisters are very proud of you, and the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation directors are also very proud of you. Tonight, you will have time to meet a representative from the company who awarded your scholarship and take a few photos. So please take advantage of this opportunity and thank your award presenter for their gift. Thank you, and I now welcome Carl back to preside over the award ceremony. Thank you.
Thank you, Naok. Appreciate that. Okay, so, young people, you are here to collect some money. So we're gonna, we're gonna progress right onto that now. So it's time to present our scholarship awards, and I, here's the process, everyone. I'm going to introduce the scholarship-sponsored company representatives who will announce their scholarship awardees. All right? So students, what I'd like you to do is please come forward as your name is called to accept your award and then remain near the podium until all of your sponsors' awards have been presented. At the conclusion of each sponsor's presentation, to my left here, we're gonna ask you to go by the flags, and we're gonna take a group photo with your sponsor, award, and of course, yourselves. So the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation is thankful again to our 11 partners who continue to demonstrate their passion for education, and we are very pleased to announce our first scholarship this evening. It's BAE, yeah, BAE Systems, and we're very pleased to have, uh, Scott Davis, Vice President and General Manager, and Angie Lohman, Program Manager of Combat Wheel Vehicles. I may be, not exactly straight, but I'm close. Bradley Fighting Vehicles. Gotta forgive me, I work for General Dynamics.
It's okay, we got your leg crossed.
Scott, Angie.
Good evening, city council mayor, city manager. So BAE Systems has been a scholarship sponsor for nine years and is awarding two $1,000 scholarships to students pursuing undergraduate degrees in STEM, which is science, technology, engineering, or mathematics. I, I would like to recognize, uh, these folks for their great accomplishments. It's, uh, it's great to be here to support our local community and our fine young folks that will play a key role in our future. I personally am passionate about our next generation taking on interest in STEM, and I believe it's critical to the future of our nation. With that, I'd like to congratulate a couple of individuals with, uh, scholarships on behalf of BAE Systems for the hard work they've completed and the great accomplishments they'll achieve in their future. So first, would like to, uh, recognize Dina Booney. Just, just a minute, I wanna... So Dina graduated in 2021 from the International Academy East and currently attends University of Michigan as a pre-medical biology major. She has a 4.0 GPA after her first year at U of M, which is fantastic. And her anticipated date of graduation is May of 2025. She's a member of the Arab American Medical Association and the CalDian American Student Association. Okay, and then I guess we'll go over and...
Well, just hold on, Scott, you have one more, then we'll...
Okay, then I'll...
Are you gonna do it like... Okay, we can do it individual, Scott, I'm wrong.
Okay. And then next, I'd like to welcome Owen Sharnas. Owen? Just go ahead and stand here, real quick. So Owen graduates from high school this June with a GPA of 3.8 and will attend the Citadel, uh, the Military College of South Carolina, pursuing his Bachelor of Science in Accounting, and he hopes to work as a forensic accountant for the FBI. So, really interesting field.
Good job, Owen.
He's been active in varsity across country and track all four years of high school and has also been part of the National Honor Society, an adoptive family leader, and he's been active in fundraising for childhood cancers for 11 years, raising over $20,000 to date. So, pretty amazing accomplishment.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Angie, and congratulations, BAE winners. Next, the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation celebrates a long relationship with General Dynamics Land Systems. General Dynamics Land Systems has been a supporter of the scholarship program since it began in 1999, and General Dynamics will be awarding two $1,000 scholarships to high school students pursuing undergraduate degrees in engineering. I'm particularly proud of these awards because I'm a retiree of General Dynamics after 35 years of service there, and I was responsible for funding these, what have now become scholarships in perpetuity during my years with the corporation. So we recognize these two students for their excellence in education and pursuit of a college degree. All of our award winners reside in Sterling Heights. So our General Dynamics Land Systems Scholarship awardees are Fadi Arabo. Fadi? Now, Fadi is graduating this June from the International Academy in Bloomfield Hills with a 4.40 grade point average. Fadi served his community as Chair of the Sterling Heights Youth Advisory Board, a math tutor, and then National Span, Spanish Honor Society Board Chair. He's a, he's fluent in Spanish, Arabic, and English, and he plans to attend Stanford University this fall to pursue dental and biological studies towards a career as a dentist or virology professor. Next, we have Sammy Ali. Yeah, that's, that's worth a big hand. Sammy Ali Khan in Sterling Heights. Sammy? Sammy will graduate this June from the Sterling Heights Stevenson High School Maite Academy with a 4.11 GPA. Sammy was school, is his school's Quiz Bowl captain, a member of the National Honor Society, and a regular homeless shelter and food drive volunteer. Sammy plans to attend the University of Michigan and its College of Engineering in Ann Arbor to study aerospace engineering. Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you, Carl. Uh, this time, I'm speaking in my capacity as president of Macomb County Chiropractic Association, and I'm pleased to announce that the Chiropractic Association has raised funds to contribute five $1,000 scholarships again this year. Chiropractic is a natural approach to healthcare, emphasizing the integrity of the spine and the central nervous system. Chiropractic care uses only natural methods, including spinal adjustments and therapies, avoiding any medications or injections or surgery. Chiropractic care may benefit numerous neuromusculoskeletal conditions, including back and neck pain, headaches, sciatica numbness, tingling, shooting pain in the limbs, and more. Chiropractic care is safe and effective as a health approach for many ailments. Please do contact our association if you require a referral to a member doctor of chiropractic who subscribes to our code of ethical conduct. Now, I'm pleased to announce the names of our scholarship recipients, and I have your certificates right here. First is Steele Butzin. Steele? Here's your certificate, and I have a little, uh, write-up to share. Uh, Steele attends Tiffin University in Ohio, studying for his Bachelor of Science degree currently. After completing his undergraduate degree, Steele plans to enter a chiropractic graduate program. His father is a chiropractor here in Sterling Heights. He was active in high school in varsity football, soccer, and in bowling, and he has a strong volunteer history and is very active in his university's track and field team. Congratulations. Oh, okay, that's fine. Thank you. The next winner of the five is Adrielle DeCero. Adrielle? Representing the recipient. Uh, she's currently out of state attending Chiropractic College, but you'll present her with this, and Dad will hold that one for a moment, and I'll share a few words about her. She attends Palmer College of Chiropractic in Davenport, Iowa. She's studying for a doctoral degree. Her graduation date is October of 2023, and she is a returning recipient for this scholarship. Uh, she is active in, as a Bible study leader, she's active in the Motion Palpation Club at her school. She also works part-time as a personal fitness trainer, and after graduation with her doctorate, she plans to work together with her local chiropractor, Dr. Justin Berlin. Congratulations. The third of five recipients for the Chiropractic Award is Rachel Fiore. And standing in to accept the award, we have, uh, the guest of honor, the mom. Thank you so much for coming. And I spoke to her on the phone, and I know she sent her regrets and wished she could be in two cities at once. But Rachel is dual-enrolled student at Life University in Georgia, studying to earn her bachelor's degree in exercise science concurrent with her Doctor of Chiropractic degree, which she'll continue on. Uh, Rachel is active in several clubs at her university, and she does plan to return to Michigan to practice after graduation, perhaps with the local doctors at Bassett Family Chiropractic, where she previously worked as a chiropractic assistant. Congratulations. And Erica Gemmell's the next awardee. Accepting the award for Erica, we have her proud dad. Thank you. No, it's certainly a pleasure. Let me share a few words about your student. Uh, Erica is a student at Palmer College of Chiropractic at their Florida campus, and she's lucky. At the, as she plans to graduate with her doctorate in chiropractic in 2025, she graduated from Eastern Michigan University with her Bachelor of Science degree, and she also works part-time, and she participates in a folk ensemble, and she's well-deserving. Congratulations to the dad. And the last of the five, but not the least, is the inimitable Brianna Mosher. Brianna, I know you're here. Excellent. So let me share a few words about your, uh, application. Brianna attended Eastern Michigan University for her undergraduate studies towards her Doctor of Chiropractic degree studies at DeUville University in Buffalo, New York, with graduation in 2025. She has a year of work experience as a chiropractic assistant at Dr. Howard Manella's office, and she hopes to work with him after she graduates. She has over seven years' experience working with the elderly in long-term care, and she's been very active with youth ministries at the Life Church in Warren locally. Congratulations.
Thank you very much to our Macomb County Chiropractic Association Scholarship winners. Next, we have an award that is a result of a donor-advised endowment fund in honor of the dedicated service of longtime iconic Sterling Heights Mayor Richard J. Noddy. The Mayor Richard J. Noddy Scholarship for Public Service is a $1,000 scholarship awarded to a Sterling Heights college student pursuing a degree in public service. I'm honored to invite Mayor Michael Taylor to make this scholarship award presentation in Mayor Noddy's name.
Thank you very much, Carl. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity to do this. I'm honored to do it. Michael Noddy, uh, Richard Noddy's son, is normally here to, uh, make this presentation, but unfortunately, due to his travel schedule, he wasn't able to be here today. Um, this award is going to Alexa Clampett of Sterling Heights. Is Alexa here? Come on up, Alexa. I will, uh, I'll meet you down there in a moment, but I do just want to say a couple of brief things about this award and about Mayor Noddy and, and also about Alexa. You know, Mayor Noddy, uh, before he died, he served as mayor for over 20 years, and he served on this city council for over 30 years. Uh, I was honored to serve with him. He was a dedicated public servant and everything you want in somebody, uh, to serve as a mayor or council member, somebody who puts other people first, somebody who knows the good that government can do to help improve the quality of lives for the people that he serves. And, uh, I know that he's proud and honored, uh, to have created this scholarship to help people like Alexa who are looking to go into government. It's a tough business right now, you know? Um, nobody, uh, nobody seems to like their politicians, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't still have good people doing the job because, uh, we really do need to have the brightest and the best representing us. So Alexa, whatever you do, uh, decide to do, uh, if you go into public service, we'll be very happy to have you come back here to the city of Sterling Heights and serve in some capacity. So a little bit about Alexa's, Alexa is a, Alexa is a graduate of the Utica Academy for International Studies in 2021, which was recently, I believe, named as the most challenging high school in the state of Michigan. So congratulations, Alexa. You must be very smart. She's currently attending Ohio Northern University, holding a 4.0 GPA, studying philosophy, politics, and economics, and will earn her Bachelor of Arts degree in 2025. And so if you'll wait, I'll come join you, and we'll take a picture. A big round of applause for Alexa.
Thank you very much, Alexa. Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Outstanding awardee, outstanding presentation. Now we introduce a new scholarship this evening, the Martin Luther King Jr. Scholarship, funded by an endowment of the same name. The Martin Luther King Jr. Endowment is awarding one $1,000 scholarship to a Sterling Heights high school student, senior pursuing a college degree in any curriculum. It's my pleasure to present the 2022 Martin Luther King Jr. Scholarship to Jatalina Trong of Macomb Township. Jatalina, are you here? Well, Dad is, Dad is here, and we certainly welcome you, and we congratulate you. You know, you must be very proud. A little bit about Jatalina. She's graduating this June from the Gene L. Clyde Utica Academy for International Studies with a 4.19 GPA. Jatalina is a member of the National Honor Art Society, the National Honor Society and Key Club, and she applies to attend Wayne State University and study biological sciences and attend medical school to be a physician, and I know you must be very proud. Let's take a photo. Next, we have the Ronald Himmler Science Scholarships, funded by Mr. Ronald Himmler. He's awarding three $2,000 scholarships to Sterling Heights high school students pursuing a college or vocational degree in a science-related field. I invite Mr. Ronald Himmler to present his 2022 Ronald Himmler Science Scholarships. Ronald?
Hello. Uh, I established these scholarships a couple of years ago, but COVID kinda got in the way. So I, I established these to make sure that I can encourage students to pursue, uh, science and engineering. Because not coincidentally, I studied science and engineering when I was in college, physics in particular. So in general, the way I see it is humans aren't fast, we're not strong, we don't have teeth and claws, but we have brains. And scientists and engineers are the ones for making sure that we weren't extinct long ago because somebody had to invent, uh, spears and use fire and medicine and agriculture and steam engines and things. We need more people who can do that. We need more people who can do that. So we need more scientists and engineers than ever, probably. So I have three scholarships to award. The first one is to Lilly Medley.
Lilly here, or a representative?
Tonight is the Henry Ford II High School Convocation, and all the recipients were awarded there as well. There are regrets from their parents.
All right, you can still read your accomplishments, right?
Yes. Lilly Medley is graduating from Henry Ford II High School, along with the other two recipients. She has a 4.08 grade point average, and she's going to study biology at Grand Valley State. She intends to become an embryologist or a genetic counselor, National Honor Society member, various clubs. And the second person is Mass Salmon. Oh, she's not here, Chris. She's doing school stuff. She had a 4.06 grade point average. These people are so smart. Just amazing. I wish I could have done that well. Mass is going to be pre-med at Oakland University and intends to go to medical school to become a pediatrician, which is probably a very tough job to do. She has National Honor Society member and various activities for volunteering as tutors and church activities. The third person is Reagan Spear, who again is not here.
Reagan's uncle is here, Mr. Himmler.
Reagan has a 4.18 GPA at Henry Ford. She plans to attend the University of Michigan's Literature, Science, and Arts Program, majoring in Biology, co-president of the National Honor Society in her school, and the girls' varsity ball team and so on, and she plans to become an optometrist. I'm just amazed at how smart these people are. Anyway, those are the three. They all get $2,000 scholarships, and I hope that although all of you, as well as the three that I have, will go out and do some good things in the world.
This is Reagan.
Okay.
Bring them all over. Marty will do it. Thank you very much, Mr. Himmler. Just a note, you know, people do this because they want to do this. It's not for recognition. Ronald Himmler is a citizen that believes deeply in his community and in the youth of our community. In a very short time, we, the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation, managed 32 endowment funds. In a very short time, Ronald Himmler's endowment fund has become the highest-value endowment fund we have. So we need more people that care about their community and their youth like Ronald Himmler.
It's so impressive. When I first met Mr. Himmler, and he looked into the foundation and studied it, and now his endowment fund, in addition to pass-through from his own monies, these $6,000 each year the past few years, he has donated over $100,000 to a permanently endowed fund. So even in the long-term future, when he's not with us, his legacy will live on and grant these scholarships in perpetuity, and that's the function of our foundation. The majority of our money is locked up and can't be touched. We have 1-point-something million dollars, and of that, maybe $150,000 we have access to for our various immediate projects. So it's quite remarkable, and we're so pleased and proud of people like Mr. Ronald Himmler to step up for that girl. But at this time, I'm here for a different purpose. Thank you, Ronald. In my capacity as a board member and three-time president to the Rotary Club of Sterling Heights, I take great pleasure in presenting the scholarship awards for the Rotary Club. Do you have the certificates there? Thank you, Melanie. Okay, so we have two. Rotary International, first off, was founded in 1905. I wasn't there. The Rotary Club of Sterling Heights was founded, what is it, 48 years ago in 1969. The primary goal of Rotary is to make the world a better place, both through a wide variety of community service projects, locally as well as internationally. And we serve autistic and special-needs children. We promote literacy, and we provide holiday food baskets for the needy. We do water projects in Benowen in the Dominican Republic, where pure water is lacking, and we work to build park trails and enhance city parks here in Sterling Heights. We serve students, and we host leadership training events, and we help local individuals in many special-needs situations. Rotary is much more than just these two scholarships tonight. Please feel welcome to attend a Rotary Club lunch meeting at Ike's Restaurant on Van Dyke. You can call and reserve your space in advance and verify the dates, and I'd be happy to give more information. The Rotary Scholarships are for qualifying Sterling Heights students devoted to community service, and our winners this year are first Shaylin Minor. Shaylin is here, I believe? Am I wrong? Well, anyway, I have her certificate, and I'll share a few words. She'll graduate from Henry Ford II. That's right, she's at the convocation as well for the Henry Ford II, I recall. She'll graduate in June with a 3.96 GPA, and she plans to study nursing at Hope College, planning to become a labor and delivery nurse or midwife. She's been involved with dance at the Mary Skiba School of Dance, and she is a student council member as well. She's on the yearbook staff, she's on stagecraft, she's on the freshman mentorship program, the leadership group, and the National Honor Society, and she has completed over 70 hours of community service. So we congratulate Shaylin Minor. And our other awardee for the Rotary Club is named Atrina Saidi, and I don't recall if... Here she is. There you go. Perfect. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I'm going to share a few words about you. Atrina will graduate from Stevenson High School in June with a 3.89 GPA, and she'll attend Michigan State University, majoring in political science and pre-law. And she's a swim instructor and a lifeguard as well. She's been involved with National Honor Society, the Key Club, student council, volunteering at a thrift store, varsity tennis, varsity swim, club swim, piano competitions. Atrina intends to study law and pursue a career as an attorney to use her voice to better humanity. Congratulations.
Congratulations again, Atrina. Our next award is the Selfridge Base Community Council. This year, the members will award one $1,000 scholarship to a student of a military parent attached to the Selfridge Air National Guard Base. As a member of the Selfridge Air National Guard Base Community Council, it's my honor to present this award this evening. For those of you who don't know, the Selfridge Air National Guard Base Community Council, it's a civilian support group for military personnel and military families that are attached to the Selfridge Air National Guard Base. Membership consists of over 400 local business and professional people with a patriotic dedication to military personnel and families, and to honor and to demonstrate our appreciation for the many sacrifices they all make for us daily. We wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for these fine men and women. The Selfridge Air National Guard Base Community Council 2020 Scholarship awardee is Alexander Kittle. Alexander, are you here? A little bit about Alexander. Alexander's from Selby Township. He attends Lutheran High School North, and he's graduating with a 3.8 grade point average. His father's employed at Selfridge Air National Guard Base, and Alexander is applying to the Michigan Air National Guard Base at Selfridge. He has been involved in football, track, and wrestling for multiple years at his high school. He'll attend Michigan State University, pursuing a Bachelor of Science degree in nursing, and then medical school. Congratulations, Alexander. Our next awards this evening are on behalf of the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation. We'll be awarding three $1,000 scholarships. Back again is scholarship chair, Naokdo.
Thank you, Carl, and hello again. Okay. On behalf of the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation, I am honored to present our 2022 scholarship awards to three outstanding young people. Nathan Booze is our first. Is he here?
He's coming home from refereeing a soccer game.
Oh, my gosh, and you are?
He'll be your mom.
Mom, congratulations. We shall take you in his place.
He'll be here soon.
Okay, please stay right there. Thank you. Nathan will graduate in May from the Booze Homeschool.
Boz.
Boz, I'm sorry. With a 4.0 GPA. He plans to attend Indiana Wesleyan University this fall. He has been an active part of travel soccer elite teams, taken first place in several speech competitions, and participated in local musicals. He has volunteered in local nursing homes with vacation Bible schools, and has even participated in a week-long mission trip to Brazil. Nathan has developed leadership skills through the Student Statesmanship Institute and the House of Representatives and Senate, and as a youth ministry worship leader at Faith Lutheran and Woodside in Troy. Well done. Thank you so much. Okay. Our next recipient is Philip Atier Gabriel, and we probably know he's not here as well at his school's convocation ceremony. Philip Atier will graduate from Henry Ford II High School with a 4.13 GPA. He will attend the University of Michigan and aspires to be, expires to a career as a cardiothoracic surgeon. He is active in the National Honor Society, the Spanish National Honor Society, and also has maintained a part-time job through it all. Philo is also active in his church, teaching hymns and the Coptic language in Sunday School. Congratulations, Philo. Hey. Well, I know she's here because I met her. Paige Westergaard? Please stay right here with me. Paige is a senior at Regina High School with a 4.10 GPA and a member of the varsity bowling team. Paige will attend Sienna Heights University this fall to major in Biology with a minor in Art and continuing her bowling career. There's a lot of bowlers in this room, by the way. She is an active community volunteer working with multiple organizations. After Sienna Heights, Paige looks to attend optometry school and open her own private practice. Way to go, Paige. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Paige. Our next scholarship award this evening comes from the Sterling Heights City Manager Public Management Scholarship. A $1,000 scholarship will be awarded to a Sterling Heights area high school senior or current college student who's pursuing a degree in public administration. The 2020 Scholarship Award winner, I believe, is Max Renn. Max, if you're in the room, we're asking you to come up. Presenting this scholarship is Sterling Heights City Manager Mark Vanderpoel.
Thank you very much, Carl. I appreciate it. I'm really pleased to present this scholarship, the Sterling Heights Public Management Scholarship. Let me just talk a little bit about the scholarship and the reasoning behind it. In Sterling Heights, professional public management is inherently represented in our form of government that we have here, known as council manager government. This professional form of government is used in 60% of all cities across the country with a population of over 100,000. Over 4,000 cities have this form of government, and it's based off the corporate model, and it's also very popular internationally as well. Professional public management degrees extend well beyond city managers and include finance directors, library directors, police chiefs, planners, chiefs of staff, state and federal positions, diplomats, and the like. The list goes on and on. While public management is very rewarding, the challenge is that we have to be sure there's sufficient interest among those that represent younger generations, including Generation Z and Millennials. They are the ones who are going to replace old-timers like me. The scholarship helps achieve that overarching objective, and with that in mind, I'm so pleased to be able to announce this year's recipient. Max Renn will graduate from Stevenson High School with a GPA of 3.95. I've rounded that up to four and changed his transcript accordingly. He's been involved...
Didn't somebody get in trouble for that?
He's been involved in marching band, track, varsity swim, Key Club, student council, varsity cross-country, is an Eagle Scout, a certified lifeguard, and also holds a part-time job. He served as a volunteer election poll worker, participated in food drives and community beautification programs, and I had to cut out most of the list. Max will major in International Studies at Michigan State University's Jane Madison's program with an emphasis on public management. Individuals who know Max describe him as a focused, determined, intelligent, and motivated individual. At least, that's what his mother tells me. Max's history teacher had the following to say about him. "Max's love for country and dedication in preserving the stories of World War II veterans earned him a spot to represent the state of Michigan at the National Museum in New Orleans." Pretty impressive. Max's work with veterans, his record of volunteerism and community activism earned him this elite privilege. And I had the opportunity to talk to Max about this scholarship and asked him what he really plans on doing long-term, fully expecting that he would say he wanted to be a city manager. Instead, he told me he wants to be a diplomat, and I responded, "That's not going to work. I need you to be a city man." And after I explained what that role is, he said, "No, I'm going to stick with it." So in any case, please join me in congratulating Max for his good work.
Little difference in height. Congratulations, Max. All right, our next-to-last scholarship award this evening, we bring her back again. Naokdo from Vibe Credit Union.
Hello again. Okay. On behalf of Vibe, I just want to say thank you for everyone's time and accomplishments today. It's just amazing. Vibe Credit Union started over 86 years ago with 10 employees of the former Michigan Bell Telecom Credit Union. Today, we reside and assist over 70,000 members, over $1 billion in assets, and 16 branches across Southeast Michigan, a nonprofit credit union again in Michigan. So on behalf of Vibe Credit Union, I am just honored to continue our support of the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation Annual Scholarship Program. We believe strongly in caring for community and making a difference in the lives of those in our communities. I'm very pleased to announce the winner of the Vibe Credit Union's 2022 Scholarship, Christian Allen. He's also not here. He will graduate from Henry Ford II High School with a 3.93 GPA. He runs his own business called CJA Designs, manufacturing and marketing jewelry. He will study business at the University of Pennsylvania with intentions for a career in corporate finance. He serves as the DECA president at his school, a small business organization. He's also part of the National Honor Society. He has earned... He's also part of the National Honor Society. He has earned varsity letters in golf, swimming, and powerlifting. He also takes German at Oakland University. So unfortunately, again, his family and him are not able to join us tonight, but we congratulate him nonetheless, and I will surely send him your kind regards and best wishes when I do meet with them. Thank you.
Okay. Our final scholarship award this evening. It's from a longtime friend and supporter of the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation, Wuja Calcaterra and Sons. They're awarding one $1,000 scholarship to a Sterling Heights high school senior pursuing a college degree in any curriculum. And the inaugural Wuja Calcaterra and Sons Scholarship is awarded to Sarah Friedman. Sarah, are you here? Okay. Sarah's not here. A little bit about Sarah. She'll graduate this June from Bishop, Bishop Foley Catholic High School with only a 4.43 grade point average. Sarah was a Sterling Heights Parks and Recreation Flashpad attendant. Sarah was a Sterling Heights Parks and Recreation ice rink attendant. Sarah was a Sterling Heights Parks and Recreation building monitor. She was her school drama club president and also key club president. Sarah plans to attend Catholic University of America and pursue a degree in studio art, digital art and design. Sarah, we congratulate you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, please join me in congratulating our 23 2022 scholarship awardees. Now I invite the mayor and the city council representatives to gather in the lobby for a group photo with all 23 scholarship awardees, all scholarship sponsors, and all Sterling Heights Community Foundation board members. After the group photo is taken, our program is concluded. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Carl. We appreciate it. We're gonna, we got a just minor bit of business to attend to, and then we're going to close the meeting and we'll go out there when the meeting is closed. Sound good?
Sounds good.
So I will open it up to my colleagues. We do have a suggested resolution. Is there anyone that would like to make that motion?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Sarowski?
We resolved to recognize and congratulate the 2022 recipients of scholarship awarde- oh, sorry, guys, of scholarships awarded through the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation Scholarship Program, Antutak Partners BAE Systems, General Dynamics Land Systems, McComb County Chiropractic Association, the family of Richard J. Noddy, Sterling Heights City Manager, Ronald Himmler, Rotary Club of Sterling Heights, Selfridge Air National Guard Base Community Council, Vibe Credit Union, and Wuja Calcaterra and Sons for their continuing generosity and support. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Very briefly, congratulations to all of you. You guys are amazing. Your parents, congratulations for raising such wonderful young men and women, and we are honored that you are part of our community and go out and do great things.
Counsel, anyone else? If not, I will just echo that. Thank you to all the parents that are here. Thank you for coming and attending this. If you don't mind, we will adjourn the meeting very briefly and we'll go out into the lobby and gather for a group photo, and then you can all go off and celebrate. So with no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'll open up communications from citizens. Seeing none, I'll close that portion. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, support.
Moved and supported. With no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Congratulations again, everyone.